This conference will now be recorded.
It appears like our live stream video, live streaming YouTube will not operate this evening, but we do have the go to meeting is recording the proceedings. We'll be able to upload the video tomorrow.
Okay, I assume that's not objectionable?
It's not avoidable and it's legal.
Okay, I suppose that's the right.
We'll have to do for now, yes. So, thank you, we're ready.
Okay, as the time is now six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call?
Manson? Garrett?
Here.
Templin?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Huggins?
Here.
It appears Commissioner Manson is absent.
Thank you. Any additions or changes to the planning commission agenda?
Not.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded approval of the planning commission agenda? Question for information purposes, is there a reason we need to do a roll call on that?
You could just, you could just do.
Voice vote?
Yeah, you could do a voice vote, we've always done roll, but there's no reason why you couldn't, as long as there's not a question about the result of the vote. So if you had one or two that said no and you were concerned, you could do it that way, but there's no reason why you couldn't.
Then I will call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted. Next item is to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on February 28th, 2023. Any changes or corrections?
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Planning commission minutes from February 28th, 2023 have been accepted. Disclosures of conflict of interest, anyone have anything to disclose?
Chairman, Templin, I have to excuse myself from item 7A.
Okay. Commissioner Milburn will, there's a potential conflict on 7A, anyone else? Any disclosures of outside communications regarding commission business should be disclosed at this time? Seeing none, we're now prepared for a call to the public. Anyone who would like to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentations for informational purposes, no action will be taken and there's a four minute time limit. Would anyone like to address the planning commission tonight? Accept the mayor?
Well, I am here to thank Bob Garrett for his years of service on this body. Bob's going to be stepping off and I just wanted to formally thank Bob in the presence of his co-board members, co-planning commissioners for his efforts over these past 12 years. I think Dave Anderson appointed you about 12 years ago. We appreciate the hard work that you put in, the dedication and your years of service. Bob and I just wanted to make sure that I formally was able to do that while you were still sitting here. We will, of course, recognize you if you'll come to a, at a city council meeting with a presentation when we're able to get a suitable plaque to present you, but I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you, Bob.
We have the mayor's name and address for the record.
Thank you, anyone else wish to address the planning commission at this time? Seeing none, I note we have no public hearing items tonight, but under old business, we have a presentation of the site plan for Panasonic.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we had agreed with going through this process and we had a several phase approval process and we're ready for phase three to begin, so Panasonic team asked to present a brief overview of the project like they have done before, give you caught up on the items that have been completed and what to expect at the next, with the next site plan submitted. So with that, I will turn it over to Carl Walton with Panasonic and start the presentation.
My name is Carl Walton with Panasonic. When I first expressed appreciation to the commission for allowing us of time this evening, we know you're very busy, I want to share with you that we're very excited to be here tonight. What we will be sharing is some of the details and then more renderings and even a video, if we get it to work right, of what we're planning here. What we will show you is the result of a lot of look back and lessons learned, a lot of input, both locally as well as our global partners as well. And so we're very excited, like I said, to be sharing this with you this evening. Our desire is that we, what we build here is, will not just be an anchor for this area, certainly in the Astro Development area, but also for the community, but really more importantly, a flagship for generations to come. And so we're very excited to share this with you this evening. With that being said, we'll turn it over to Dana Bromley with SSOE, our design partners, and her and her team will share some details with you, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you. We certainly appreciate your time and we have been very, very thankful for the City of DeSoto and the welcome that we've received and the cooperation that we've had on the project. Mike, if you would like to advance. So tonight we'll, we'll cover our current status on the project, in particular with regard to our site plan submissions and talk about our site plan development and give you a little preview of what the landscaping is going to look like. We'll go on to the next one. So with our current status, we are on submission three, as Brad mentioned there. We are planning to submit by April 28th with our third and final submission, which will include landscaping, signage and lighting. And our goal for that is that we would submit at the end of April to be on the May Planning Commission agenda. And we're certainly looking forward to wrapping that up. And as we've discussed, this allows us provisional, the provisional approvals that we have allows us to proceed with permitting process, which we are heavily into. Foundations are moving out there and we've done our first permit submission towards steel and moving vertical with the building, so we're very excited about that. Looking forward to continuing working with the City of DeSoto. Now, we'll turn it over to Zach Smith, our civil engineer.
Good evening, Zach Smith, Civil Department Manager with SSOE, Senior Associate. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight and talk about just the progression of the site plan. So Mike, if you'd go ahead and progress the slide, please. So we're showing here the, the current iteration of the site plan and how we've developed. So some of the things I want to walk through this in previous presentations, I want to walk through, I guess, some more detail that we've developed. Primarily, what we're highlighting in blue areas are ADA spaces, green are potential electric vehicle spaces, and then the purple are mustering points, like emergency evac, that gathering locations along the facility. Talking broadly about the parking, we have over 2,700 total parking spaces currently shown and that is for accommodating up to 1,500 employees during the day and roughly 800 employees at night. So we are parked basically to provide at least one vehicle per person that will, has opportunity to adjust down based on the input we've been getting and working with KCTA on a mass transit plan. And as that's further developed, we will adjust the parking. We are including bus drop offs on the, on the, but the north and the south here on the, on the east side of the facility and then a central location between the two of the main entrances. So we have on the north and then mirrored on the south. And we also have bus drop off locations on the west side for those employees getting in. We're providing motorcycle parking, we have roughly 40 spaces for that and currently we're showing 280 electric vehicle parking spaces in the initial development with the opportunity to further expand that down the road. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show just a couple of details of the permanent drives. Not going to get into a lot of detail here, we'll go to, Chet's been involved in those conversations, but just how we're connecting to both the West 103rd and then Astro Parkway. Have the typical parking spaces here on the, shown on this, on the southeast corner. So we're using nine by 19 parking spaces and our ADA areas are compliant with ADA requirements. Next slide, please. And here are just some more typical parking spaces for electric vehicle, how we'll designate those with an EV on the, on the pavement and also additional signage and then have mustering points. And also those will be, could be employee use areas during, during work hours. That's, that's really the current detail, are there any questions I could answer?
What was that purple area again?
It's a muster, it's called a muster point. It's basically if there was an emergency event within the facility and employees needed to evacuate, you'd have them come to a central location so you can do a roll call to make sure everyone is out and accounted for.
Is that paved or grassed?
That's going to be grassed. So yeah, good, good question, yeah. Steve, I think Stephen would be pretty upset if I put pavement where he wants to. Anything further? All right, well Stephen Tuttle with McKinsey is going to talk through the landscaping plan.
Good evening, it's good to be here tonight. My name is Stephen Tuttle, I'm a landscape architect at McKinsey and it's a privilege to be a part of this special project for Panasonic, for DeSoto, State of Kansas and really the country as a whole, as we embark on something special here. I'm going to talk to you tonight a little bit about the landscape design and what that's going to start to look like on the site. In addition to meeting the goals and objectives of the planning guidelines and code for the site, Panasonic has asked us to create a landscape design that's special to the community and responds to the community as well as provides value to the employees that come here every day, so. Landscape design can kind of be broken up into two distinct areas. So the first area is the area adjacent to the rights of way on 103rd in Astro Parkway. And the second area would be the area sort of close into the building and right on the perimeter of the building. So first I want to talk about the area around the perimeter of the site closer to 103rd and Astro Parkway. Those little green circles you see radiating around the site are symbols for trees. So you can see there's a lot of trees on the site and they're intentionally placed as structure, as a, as a design structure that goes around the site to help reveal parts of the building and screen parking as you move around the site. As you, that, that design pattern, the green circles there, you can see they're sort of interrupted when you get to the main entrances with a different type of landscaping on 103rd in the middle and then again on Astro Parkway down here for this entrance. And then right in the corner here between, you know, where 103rd and Astro Parkway come together, they sort of stretch apart and allow a view into the building. So imagine you're in a car driving east on 103rd and how that landscape behaves is, as you look out to the right, these horizontally placed trees screen your view to these parking areas and these uses down here on the west side of the building. And then as you kind of come into this, out of the roundabout, you get a view to the corner of the building here and you're able to identify what the project is in the building. And then as you come out of the roundabout, this radial pattern of trees is, is meant to funnel your view towards the main entry to the building on the north side, which is right here. So you drive along and you see down these rows of trees and it brings your attention into what you want people to look at. But as you look back to your right, that oblique angle the trees are creating is screening the parking and different things below as you proceed that way. So, and then when you arrive at the main entry, you have a different type of landscape here that helps you slow down and recognize this is where you want to turn into the site. Next slide. So we've got a series of, three renderings I want to show you that helped to describe this, this concept we just kind of walked through. So this would be heading on 103rd and you can see how the arrangement of the trees here in rows sort of provides a view right to the main point of the building here with the signage and the front entry. So it helps with wayfinding and people knowing where the front door of the building really is. But as you look back to the left, in this case, those trees start to screen the parking lot below. Next slide. Here's a view to the main entry as you arrive to the site off of 103rd and you face the building. We sort of pulled the landscape away a little bit and allowed that view into the building again. You can notice that the landscape here has a different ornamentation, it's more ornamental, a little bit more human scale as you slow down and you decelerate into the site. Something special, something that's contrasting with the, the rows of trees that are on either side of it. And then here you can see a monument sign that lets people know what the project is and what it's about. And we envisioned that would have sort of a stone face to it, something that's lit at night really nicely so people can always recognize where to turn at the project. And by happy coincidence, this starts to show at least one of the details that Zach was showing you a couple of minutes ago, how the traffic starts to flow through into the site.
And that's the main entrance?
This is the main entrance off of 103rd. Next slide. As you descend from the main entrance off of 103rd down into the site, you're going to drop about 20 feet, right Zach? So you descend into the site and this is the view that opens up to you as you approach the building. So you can see here a wall that's similar to the ones we just looked at. So a sort of a family of stone clad walls with Panasonic signage on it. In the foreground, you have these strong bands of landscaping that reinforce that radial pattern of trees that we were looking at, so it's all cohesive. In the middle ground here, this is one of several roundabouts that are on the site and we think that's a great opportunity to maybe do some art or do something a little bit vertical, makes each of those way, roundabouts a little bit special, but also could help with wayfinding through the site as you sort of circulate through. But this is sort of what it feels like to arrive at the site. Next slide. So going back to the site plan for a second, that was, we were, that was this perimeter that we were talking about and I want to talk about the areas right up adjacent to the building. So this landscape area is meant to sort of buffer that experience from parking your car and going in the building and it's sort of a transitional space, supposed to bring some calm into your, your experience as you go from one place to another. On each side of the building here, this is the north side and here's the south side, there are three spaces for people. There's main entrance in the middle on either side where visitors would entry, enter. On the west side, there's two amenity spaces, one here, one here. And then Zach alluded to this in his diagram too, the bus drop off here and down here and then he showed some as well over here. So six areas that are sort of geared towards that, that human centered experience as you come, use the site. So a couple of renderings to describe those spaces. First one here being at the place where the buses would drop you off as you come to work. So a place for people to arrive and depart for work. If you're departing, you're waiting for a bus. We've provided some bus shelters here with wind protection on the sides, with rain and snow protection on top, somewhere you can wait moderately comfortably while you wait for your bus. And so we've provided a series of those to accomplish that. And then adjacent to that, having places that people can go out at lunch or after work or on break even and, and use picnic tables to have their break time or eat their lunch. You can notice around, around this area, there's a lot of lush landscaping, it's very calming and, and curvilinear and this area is supported with trees that provide a really comfortable experience, provide shade and add some human scale to this very large building. Next slide. On the west end of the building, there are, there's this amenity area, which just really provides opportunity for employees of the building to come in and either have lunch, take a break, have meetings outside on a nice day like today and provide a variety of spaces that people can engage with the site itself. Next slide. So what about planting, just at a really high level? I think I failed to mention this at the beginning, we, we are engaged with the design concept here at the beginning and as the design moves forward, we want to engage a local landscape architect to really finalize the plant selections, somebody who's got that expertise within your community that could, that can take this the distance. But as a concept, here are the plant, the types of plants and the intent of those plants that I'd like to share with you. Up top in, in this corner, this would be a hornbeam tree, for example, and this would be the type of tree that might do really well, that wraps the site here with, with all these trees. Obviously, we've got a lot of trees shown on this diagram and so we would use a diversity of species. We wouldn't want to plant a thousand of one tree, so I would expect lots of different trees. That's good for the ecosystem, it's good for the site, it's good to hedge against risk of disease and those sorts of things as well. But conceptually, we think this type of tree would be great for this because it's got a real tidy form, it's got a good size and shape and it would reinforce that concept we talked about. This tree in the middle here is just indicating how we would use an evergreen or a conifer tree to accomplish some, some really specific screening here at these areas in the, the green color. Where we definitely want to screen some of these uses, some of the vehicle movements that happen over here. So you can envision something that's a little tighter screening, evergreen and you don't have to depend on, and you can depend on full, for your, four season foliage to screen that. Thirdly, as a tree type concept, the areas in blue here at the entry that we were talking about would be something a little more special, maybe something that flowers and really celebrates that entry into the site. And then the areas in red here, we want to give back to the idea of the Kansas prairie, a meadow, just open them up and not have something in these areas that needs to be so intensive of a planting but can kind of just open up as well. And there is in yellow around the building are, like we saw in the previous rendering, that just provide trees, shrubs, ground cover around the building and help make the places around the building really habitable. Next slide. And before, before we head to, we have a short video to kind of bring it all together, but I think you can see in this rendering, what I like about this rendering is it kind of shows the whole big idea and as you, you sort of move around the site this way, everything's funneling your vision towards this main entrance and then it really stretches apart in the middle here, allows you to see the corner of this building and identify it. And then you can see on the, on this side here, the layers of screens that are screening that is created by all the trees that really help to screen these uses back here. So I know that's kind of a lot to sort of absorb, bouncing around back and forth, plans, rendering. So what we've done is we've created a short video that I hopefully can kind of bring it all together. So Mike, if you want to hit the video.
Can I at least ask a question? Back on that previous picture you had, so where I'm looking at grass appears in this picture, are you mowing all of that area?
No, I think it would be a, I think it'd be something that sort of can, is short generally and just seeds itself. And that's one of those areas that we'd really lean on the local landscape architect to help define what that, that mix is, but I don't think it's something that we would want to mow. It's not a manicured lawn, if, if that's.
Yeah, I'm assuming that same would be true underneath the trees.
Right, yeah, that, that, yeah, good question, yeah. That, that would sort of spread kind of throughout here. I think in key points, you might support this with a little bit of under, of landscaping underneath it to help reinforce that, but yeah, generally it's, it's really that kind of that meadow, meadow field because that's meadow planting, because that's a lot of, a lot of territory, so.
Thank you.
What are those large holes in the parking lot, the white ones?
Yeah, good, good question. High transmission, high transmission, is that the right term Zach? Yeah, so you'll see these around town in various parts, but they're, they're relocating these along 103rd and then they're going to come into our parking lot here on the north side as well. So we don't know exactly the final location because Zach's working out that conversation with, with KDOT, is that right? Evergy, thank you.
Evergy transmission, that's running through there, so it's part of the negotiation. Location of the transmission.
Power of the facility.
Okay. So we wanted to represent those as they have a footprint on, on the site here.
In the parking lot?
Yep.
That's kind of interesting because there are substations just to the east of that, right? But they're going to have to bring it out around and come around the building to bring it in?
We, we have multiple entrances of power and so that's one of the reasons why unfortunately part of the path is through there.
Interesting.
And then one other question, what's the relative elevation change from that roundabout? To the building?
About 30 foot.
Lower.
Lower.
Okay.
I've got a question also, we could go back to the site plan. Yeah, right there, it's fine. You know, there's a lot of detail in the west and north and south. Is, is the east side of the building being worked on or is that just not done? It looks, looks like it might not be finished.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off and Zach probably has some more to add to it here. These are stormwater areas down here, kind of in very light blue.
Yeah, I think in between where the road is and the building.
Over, like off up here or?
I'm sorry, I didn't see where you're pointing.
The east side is primarily paved.
Yeah, this is, this is paved through here.
Will it just be for maneuvering?
It's an internal road, it's an internal road, there's no public access out that side.
So it'll primarily be, it won't be parking, but it'll be paved?
Right for the truck yard.
And is the rest of the site open to the public? Can get in off of the Astro or 103rd on any of the entrances?
So it will be fenced with the ornamental fence that we showed there. We will have gates that will normally be open, but if there's a need for emergency or something like that, then we will have the option of closing the gates.
The east half, and I think I alluded to this in one of the earlier presentations or did present it, but the east half is, is secured for only employee or truck access. And so the, the delivery trucks come in at this, this lower entryway and come down where there will be a guardhouse, they'll go in, they'll make their deliveries to various locations and then they will come back out this way. The, the, there will be an entrance or a secured gate here, but it will be locked except for, you know, if security or emergency services needed access in, in the case of an emergency. But otherwise, all traffic is controlled through this guardhouse on the south. And as Stephen mentioned, these are three stormwater detention ponds to mitigate the runoff from the, the development.
And there will be grass around those, so as it transitions from the paving?
I mean, I'm sure just, just north of the truckload there that goes inside the building, those, that area looks like it might be parking lot, might not.
So, so.
You were on it right there.
Right here, so this is a, this is a, as a truck dock area. So trucks would come in and dock or they could have their, their trailer stored here. And so this is paved, this is unpaved. So we're, you know, and these areas are unpaved right now, but it's to be determined whether, you know, if they needed to be used, but right now those are not officially paved. But this would be an unpaved area, unpaved.
All right, thank you.
Now just maybe quick, maybe quickly add, the area right, right to the north of where you were talking about, Mark has screening identified here as well to help, help screen that use down there.
And the detention ponds are actually on your property. At this point, you're not proposing any sort of landscaping features around the detention pond? detention ponds, just grass?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're really trying to prioritize the effort of the landscape to where the public would engage with it the most. The video? Any other questions? All right.
Look forward to seeing it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on then to new business, item 7A, considered final plat for Cottage Creek. The record reflects, Mr. Commissioner Milburn is leaving the building.
So noted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's happening for you is the final plat for Cottage Creek Townhome Development. As you recall, we did approve that at the previous meeting, and the city council did also, or you recommended approval to the city council in the February meeting. It was approved by the city council on March 16th before building permits can be issued. The plat must be brought for the planning commission for approval, and then recommend the city council accept easements in the right of way. We've done our review of the project, gone through the checklist of submittals, find that everything is in place. Couple of things to note that it will be split into two lots. There's, can be 85th Place that is, comes in off of Ottawa Street, and then also Hammond Street is a new street that'll be, as we talked about, will be the public street, which will have curbs and gutters, sidewalk on the east side, and it will extend and tie into Lexington Avenue. So there'll be two lots. So the council will be accepting the right of way for 85th Place and for Hammond Street. Everything is, as Mr. mentioned, we have reviewed that. It does meet our standards for final plats. One thing I would like to point out as a condition of approval is that there is a piece that is being dedicated or being vacated by the city. That'll be done at a public hearing at the August 20th, pardon me, April 20th meeting. So as far as a condition of approval, staff recommends to approval of the residences at Cottage Creek Final Plat with the condition that the area is vacated as shown on the final plat. And you can kind of see, Mike, if you could just kind of outline that area, it's 15 feet along Lexington and then the kind of a trapezoidal shape on the corner of Lexington and Ottawa.
Along here, and then?
Actually, it's just to the, closer to lot one, yeah, right there. That's the additional piece, that's sort of that trapezoid shape that gets dedicated. And it's only needed for building setback lines, it's not needed for development, it's just to meet the building setback. So it'll all be open space. And we do have a utility easement that will be retaining a 10-foot utility easement along Lexington Avenue. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have. The applicant, Mr. Roy, is here tonight, so.
Any questions? Seeing none, retain a motion?
I will make a motion that we recommend approval of final plat with the condition noted.
Second. Are we recommending approval, or are we actually approving it?
You approve, it does go to the council for acceptance of easements and rights of way, but the planning commission does approve.
Moved and seconded for improvement, approval of the final plat. We sent to the city council, subject to easements and right of ways as identified in the report. I understand correctly. Seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Garrett?
Yes.
Timlin?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Harris?
Thank you. Just now. Next item, business 7B, discuss potential text amendments to the city code for street trees, cul-de-sac radius, and corner lot definition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throughout, as we've been going through and looking at plats and projects and preliminary plats and site plans, we have noticed a few things that have come up that are not exactly as they should be within our city code, that we think we need some clarification on. I guess I'll go with the, a little bit the easier one first. The street tree is, we've been actually enforcing this at every 40 feet as far as street tree and our landscape buffering. It's a pretty common distance within Johnson County, most communities, in fact, everyone I've checked does have a 40-foot spacing on their street tree. And actually, I believe it was Commissioner Milburn somewhere brought up the fact that we had 75 feet in there. And sure enough, looked it up, because we've just always assumed, and there's that word that gets you in trouble sometimes, that it was always 40 feet. So looked it up, and sure enough, it said 75. And we're recommending that we change it to 40 feet, which is what we have been enforcing over the last several years, probably, Mike, since you've been.
Twenty years.
Twenty years since you've been here, so. So that's the first one that we'd like to recommend to the.
Before moving to the second one?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion about that? Does anybody have any objection to that?
I guess, I guess I have a question on when would that be enforced versus what has been submitted and those types of?
I guess my understanding would be enforced from the day that it's adopted by the city council. I don't think we can retroactively go back and enforce the.
I'm talking if projects are in the works, are those going to be excluded from that change?
Well, if they haven't been approved yet, if it doesn't come to the planning commission yet, it would be enforced by, by that. Before the, if the city, if something comes to the planning commission before the council approves it, we'd probably have to use that standard. But once the council approves it, anything that shows up with planning commission, even if it's, we've had our sketch plat meetings, things like that, it would still have to meet the new standard.
And it's my understanding that generally, the ones that we've done in the past have been the 40 feet, you've been using that.
Yes.
So hopefully, that wouldn't be too shocking. Any other discussion about that before the moment? Okay.
All right. The next one that's come up is the corner lots. And it's primarily an issue, I mean, really almost exclusively in the Old Town part of De Soto with the original plat. We've had a few instances recently where we've gotten some discussions with property owners on what's the front, or what's the side, and what's their rear, rear yard setbacks. And actually, it's right across the street from City Hall, where there's that accessory building where this first came into play. Property owner there was saying, they've got two sides, they don't have a rear yard. They've got, when you're on a corner, you have a front on each street, so you've got two fronts. And then we needed to define what was the correct rear yard setback and side yard setback, so they could place their accessory building. So if you kind of drill down into the city code, the way it's written, it's not exactly clear what is the rear yard setback. So we wanted to make it clean, that says the front yard setback is the narrow part of the, where it fronts the street, the primary one, because you do have two fronts. And then that will help us determine what is the rear yard setback. So I've got an example that we change. Actually, this drawing is in our city code at this point. So as you can see, the narrow side of all these lots would be considered the front. And then you would also, then the wide side would be on, on the street as well. But the primary front, the one that we would use to determine the rear yard setback, would be the, I guess, the narrow lot size. So the only insurance, instance that it's a little different is if you're on an alley, then you would have a front, a rear, and then two sides. But, so that's kind of a little difference there, only if you're on an alley. But I hope I've explained this well enough, but it really comes up with, with some of these, like I said, older planted lots that, where the house is not, is turned, and that the front is not necessarily what you would think the front. And of course, the house right next to, while we're across from Sea Hall, the front of the house actually is on the wide side of the yard, but the driveway is on the narrow side. But even in this instance, we would consider the narrow side the primary front to determine setbacks. And then, of course, Bob, your house is pretty much the same on both. You've got a wide and a wide. But if you look at clearly your situation, your driveway and your front door face out to Wyandotte Street, so that would be considered your front to help determine your rear yard setbacks. And then, of course, if it just, nobody can agree, we do have language in there, it says the committee development director just gets to make that decision. But it is based upon the language that we're suggesting be adopted by the planning commission recommended to city council for inclusion in the city code or updating the city code. So I hope that made some sense. It's kind of strange when you are just sort of talking about it academically, but when we had to place that, or work with the builder or the owner of the property where their accessory building was being placed, it got a little difficult to really make that case why it should be here. And then we're potentially going to go down the road having a variance, because they didn't exactly see it the way that we saw it. And so, well, it all worked out, and we did get the accessory building in place, but we would kind of like to avoid those discussions with property owners and just saying, here's the standard, here's your front, here's your rear, here's your sidebar yard setbacks. And it's up to you to make your accessory building fit, garage, whatever you want to do. So any questions?
So in your new description, maybe I haven't found it yet, but is there a distinction on the corner lot between the side yard and the front yard on the building setback distance?
Well, there's two fronts, as I, as we talked about, but we kind of have to determine which is the primary front, and that goes back to, and I, we looked at Lenex and Olathe, a couple of other communities, and they all use the narrow side as the front. Now, why that is, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I, I can see that from what you've had.
Okay.
But now you've got a lot on the, a house on the corner on the long side, is there a reduced building line setback?
No, there will not be.
It's primarily an accessory use issue, right?
It, it primary isn't accessory use, is incorrect.
Accessory use in the side yard, but you can't.
Correct.
So the question is, where's the rear yard? I think that's right.
Well, the setback would apply to the primary structure as well.
Sure.
Yes, that is.
It would apply.
But it just gives them, it tells the property owner, gives them an idea where it can fit and where, or where it has to fit versus getting into a sort of semantic debate on, well, I've got two side yards versus a rear and a side yard. And that's kind of what we. Or two rear yards, and we had. Yeah. So that's kind of the, and we did check with other communities, and that's pretty much the language they had. And then I did think it was important just to say, instead of continuing, having the property owner, and I don't want to say they were out of line, but you know, saying, we're going to go and get a variance, and which sets off a whole nother round of activity and things that city staff has to do, pulling the BZA in, it's like, let's just make a decision and, and live with it. And I think we've made it clear enough that most people would read this and say, okay, this is now my front, this is now the rear, and here's the sides. So that's what we're trying to clean up.
So really, in your example down there, where you have the corner lot shown on there, if that lot is a little bit wider, I'm gonna call it east-west, then that house would be faced west? Is there ever a scenario where that would?
Well, that's kind of the scenario that's on that house there, is the wide side is actually where the front door is and the address is. But the driveway is on the narrow side, but we would consider that to be the primary, still the narrow side, even though, I guess we're taking out where the front door is, it's the dimensions of the lot that dictate the, what is the primary front.
Yeah, I'm sure you're going to get a lot of front doors that aren't on the front yard if you do this.
Yeah. Now, it doesn't, it's what, you know, I've been here a little over six years, it's the first time it's come up, but it came up in a kind of a manner that threw everybody through a, for a, through, for a loop. And so now here we are, trying to take care of it with the planning commission and ultimately city council.
So then I think it kind of goes back to having a rear yard next to somebody's side yard.
That is, yeah, we talked about that earlier, yeah, that, that is a potential that could happen. A lot of communities discourage it, but I personally don't see it as such a big issue, but.
Any other discussion about this? Now, what I understand is you're going to prepare a text amendment in that public hearing on this.
That is correct.
I'll fine with the language, I just, that's that one point about having.
I think it's worthy discussion, and hopefully, when we have a public hearing on it, we can hatch that out.
Okay.
But I don't have any problem with moving forward and looking at it.
I get, I guess, I don't want to beat this to death, but the, the primary concern here is auxiliary buildings.
Correct.
And the intent is to get them in the backyard or isolated from street view.
As much as possible, yes. And then also maintain the appropriate setback, because it, the instance that we used, we were just going back and, like I said, and what was the front? So what's the rear? What's the side? And, you know, the property owner wanted to scoot that building all the way over closer to the property or to their side, in this case, to their east. And he felt like that was not appropriate, we needed to enforce that crater distance. So it just led to some.
What is the side, rear yard setback for auxiliary buildings?
Well, it does depend on which zoning district you're in, but.
I mean, for our one.
Well, this, this came up in the RH district, I think it's 20 feet in the back and seven on the sides, and then I think 25 is the front yard setback.
They're the same as for the, the principal structure, we don't have a separate setback for accessory structures.
And Mark makes a good point, though, I think when you do bring this back, we ought to have those setbacks.
Okay, I can do that.
If that's, I think, an important piece of the discussion.
I think we also need to, I think it's clearly defined, but I think we need to clearly define that there's a front yard setback on both sides of a corner lot.
Yeah, and that is in the, in the code. It's not in this particular section, but it is, is already defined. And I actually just took a little snippet of that definitions ball, I'll make sure that that is part of the presentation on, at the public hearing.
Yeah, certainly relevant for public hearing, I think you need to have that. That'd be good.
What about the, the places that are already established?
Well, they're already established, so I guess, term, but they're, they're sort of non-conforming use, and we won't. do anything. Now, I guess the only way it would come into play would be as if the accessory structure that was non-conforming burns down to a point that it can't be repaired. And then they'd have to apply for a new permit and then they'd have to meet the new regulation. And I think our definition is over 50% damaged. And that would, that would be an issue for Cameron to decide whether or not it's 50%.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to add on to them within that newly defined setback either. So they've become legal non-conforming.
Yeah, legal non-conforming.
Any other discussion on the second item? Okay. Cul-de-sacs.
All right, cul-de-sacs. And this has come up actually some of the discussions that Chad and I have had, looking at some of our preliminary plats. And in our code, we specifically say that the cul-de-sac is 50 feet. Also, our standard within, within the city of DeSoto is to use Kansas City Public Works Association specifications, which calls out a 39-foot radius for cul-de-sac detail. And as you can, I handed out this and Commissioner Milburn was kind enough to put together this drawing here and then also turning radius for a fire vehicle and how they would turn in a 39-foot radius. So you can see that they can turn and do a full loop. It is fairly tight, but the driver will have to, you know, I mean, pay attention to what they're doing. I did also share this information with Chief Maxton and I guess he, oh, he is, he's back tonight. So he had to step out for a little bit, but I guess our thought process initially was, we do talk about Kansas City APWA standards. That's what city of DeSoto goes by for our streets, our pavement thicknesses, all these things, except for this, at least at this moment. We have this sort of difference in that standard and what is in our city code. Ted's also gone down this road when he was at the city of Alath and and they actually did change their standard back from 50 feet to 39 feet. So our recommendation is to look at the 39-foot. It does save quite a bit of cost for paving. It's also more for our city crews to plow for snow. And it's more for us to maintain. So I don't personally, and I can ask the chief to speak to this, but don't know that's truly going to affect our firefighting capabilities by reducing the size of the cul-de-sac. So.
What about more cars in the cul-de-sac?
Well, I guess that's the one of the things that honestly, the bigger cul-de-sac encourages more cars to be there. And we really don't want to have those in there in case there is a fire and there is ambulance and fire vehicles. When you can look at the smaller cul-de-sacs, people don't tend to park there as much. Once again, that's sort of anecdotal on my part, but it's things that we look at when we do our street evaluations, pavement evaluations, where's people, where are people parking, things like that. And the bigger ones tend to have more cars in, within the cul-de-sac, which is kind of also a hindrance for emergency vehicles getting in and out of there. And every once in a great while, these big cul-de-sacs, you'll see somebody just park smack dab right in the middle of it, you know, and.
Yeah, I, I totally get the idea of the smaller cul-de-sac if you have smaller lots. But I think that the ones that I know of in this town that have large lots, cul-de-sac bulbs, a 39-foot radius would be difficult to service the, the houses that use it.
Yeah, and I don't know what some of the older subdivision, I guess, when I say subdivision, some of our large lots subdivisions to the east. I know like Taylor Court, that subdivision, they, they don't have 39-foot cul-de-sac bulbs. They were developed in the county and the, I don't know if the county had much of a standard back then, but we do have some that wouldn't even meet this 39-foot radius.
So I mean, also I think, I mean, when you're laying these, you know, subdivisions out, when you have to use that 50-foot radius. I mean, the reason for a cul-de-sac is you're trying to, you're probably button up to a creek or some other thing that you got to get turned around because you can't cross. So by using those bigger bulbs, that just pushes those houses back further into the creek. Then also, I mean, in some instances, you can't put a house there. So you have to put a wall or some other thing there because you're using that bigger bulb. So there's added costs that not only are not shown on, you know, this detail, but that these developers are up against it. If we would use a smaller one, they probably wouldn't be impacted as much.
So proposals for a 50-foot radius right of way with a 39-foot paved bulb?
Correct. No, that's actually the 50-foot radius is the paved to back of curb.
Well, I'm looking at your language that you've got here, a 50-foot radius right of way for any closed-in local, that's, that is true.
Yeah, and typically we have 11 feet if you go behind the curb on our streets. So that's where the 50 feet comes from.
Yeah, that's correct. That's 50 foot typically.
50-foot radius right of way.
Yes.
And a 39-foot paved.
Back curb.
Right.
Chief Maxton, have any comments on this?
Thank you. Good evening. Todd Maxton, Northwest Fire, Fire Chief. Northwest remains neutral on the matter, believe it or not, when it comes to building codes that we're not against developers. What Brad and city staff has said is accurate, in my opinion, and what we run across, the events that we run into are isolated and the complaints and the concerns, it's not necessarily about maneuvering a large fire apparatus and being able to do it in a one-stop shop to make, to make the bulb. It's getting, getting in and getting the apparatus in the right position, especially in case that there's a rescue situation. If you've got one car in the wrong place or even a fire truck that ends up in the wrong place, that's going to affect our aerial operations that we're going to have incoming. So like I said, we're neutral on the matter. And I also believe that if, sometimes if you do make it bigger, you're going to have cars that might go in at angled parking. We kind of support the, the 78, there are different sized cul-de-sacs throughout the city. As we discussed, the 78 feet cul-de-sac in diameter is maneuverable for us. And then as far as the other concerns, it's where other, other cars are parked at and we need to look at it. Not during daytime hours. It's weeknights and weekends. Where are people? Where are they naturally going to park at just to find the parking? So as long as we can get in and out and we enforce current regulations and partnership, not only with code enforcement, but also with the sheriff's office, blocked hydrants and then the vehicles that are illegally parked, especially on the big dates like 4th of July, that's when it's, it impacts us. So that's my input. I don't think any questions.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I would say I've, I've been involved in design of streets and stuff for about 40 years. It's always been, you know, 50-foot radius to the right of way and 39-foot radius or 78-foot diameter on the, on the paved section. And I haven't really heard of too many problems with that, but when the city tried to make the change, what was it, 94? They tried to go to 90-foot, 4-foot, it was a mess. I mean, staff had trouble administering it, you know? Mistakes were made on construction. I think there's a lot to be said for having a standard product that everybody knows what it is, how it works and, and how to do it. And and, you know, there, there are certainly consideration for, you know, more maintenance, a lot more asphalt out there to take care of, and there's even more curb. And on a normal cul-de-sac, say a 65, 70-foot type lot, you don't end up with much parking space between the two-car drive, you know, driveways that come out. So I, I would, I support this.
Any other comments?
I'm mixed. I don't really know. We used to live on a cul-de-sac in Alath and we did have people park down regularly when they, you know, they had multiple kids. They were not in the driveway. They were parking down there so people didn't have shuffle cars to get out and go to work. So.
Anytime you have, you kind of family gathering or wherever, you're going to have extra cars. So they got to work someplace.
Right.
But my biggest issue was with the fire apparatus.
Yeah.
I agree. We need to have something standardized, standardized, but I'm just not sure about reducing the size.
Do we want to see this come back as a text amendment to be done with public hearing on and continue the discussion or are we objection, objecting to it?
I'm good with what, what we've got here.
The 50.
Yeah.
50-foot radius right of way and the 39-foot back curb. You're willing to look at that?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I agree.
But we'll have a public hearing on it, so we'll get to hear it. We'll have people talk about it, but I'll talk about it.
Yeah. If y'all think it's fine, that's fine. I just, like I said, I've lived on a cul-de-sac before and I know that.
Hear about what the regulation is. There's always going to be one or two people that's true, push it. So.
As long as we can get our emergency vehicles down there.
Okay.
Okay. Brad, did you want anything else on this?
No, I appreciate your comments and we will bring this back the next planning commission meeting for public hearing.
That completes our agenda. Are there any other topics to be discussed with the planning commission? Other than Bob, is this it?
This is you.
Oh my gosh. Well, thank you.
I'm going to retire.
Don't worry, they may pull you back. It happens.
As the voice of experience.
I've enjoyed it. I really have.
You've done a good job.
That's your house.
It's been a pleasure.
Yes.
Well, thank you. If there are no other topics of discussion, I guess we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Move adjourned, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next time.